Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. And we've got a couple scouts here from Cub Scout PAC 419 that are going to come up and lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen, if you would come up front here, and then everybody would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, let's thank these gentlemen here. I want you to introduce yourself each first.
I am Tristan.
And I am Hunter.
All right, and what are you gentlemen doing here this evening?
We are working on one of our awards is Building a Better World. It's a Cub Scout adventure.
Awesome, and we got to spend a little time together earlier this evening going over how city government works and rights and responsibilities or duties of a citizen. All right, do you feel like you learned anything? Yes?
Yeah.
All right, good, good. I felt like I learned something from you, so that was good, right? Thank you for leading us in the pledge, thank you for being here, and thank you for being scouts. Have a good night. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Why don't we adopt our agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Rayrower to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that agenda is adopted. We are up to approval of the minutes from the January 17th meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 17th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower, second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have four items on our consent agenda this evening, starting with item two. The first one is strictly an informational item. It's a corporate officer change at QuickTrip number 465. City Code Section 5-21, I'm sorry, 5-216-sub-6 requires that the city council be notified of any change in legal ownership or beneficial interest of a liquor license holder. And we received an email from QuickTrip advising us that Scott Paul Zitlow is the new president, is a new officer and president of QuickTrip Incorporated. And this is informational only. The next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 23-32, accepting the Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $1,000. Community Strength Foundation has donated $1,000 to offset costs for the 2023 Winter Concert Series, so we are being asked to adopt a resolution formally accepting the donation, which is required per state statute, and the city is grateful to the Community Strength Foundation for the generosity. We're looking to adopt Resolution 23-32, accepting the donation of $1,000 from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2023 Winter Concert Series. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 23-34, approving, wow, I don't know what's going on tonight. Adding consonants and stuff. We're looking to adopt Resolution 23-34, approving gambling premises permit for Coon Rapids Lions at the North Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard. City received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids Lions Club for the North Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. Used to be Mr. Steak for those keeping track at home. The Coon Rapids Lions Club currently operates at four locations, Kendall's Tavern and Chop House, Classic Bowl, Coon Rapids Liquor, and the Rose Garden Restaurant. The organization plans to exit the premises of the Rose Garden Restaurant and move to the North Bar and Grill. With this exit and move, the Coon Rapids Lions will still remain in compliance with City Code 5-2005, which limits the number of premises permits for one organization to no more than five. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the city council, which is why it's here. We're looking to adopt Resolution 23-34, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Lions Club at the North Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. And then the final item on our consent agenda, which is item five on our agenda, is to approve partial deferred, partial deferral of SAC fees agreement Silver Star Car Wash, 2085 Northdale Boulevard. The city has received and approved construction plans for Silver Star Car Wash, which includes a water reclaim system for the car wash bay. The system allows the operator to reclaim and recycle a portion of the water used in the building and ultimately reduce the amount of gray water that is sent into the sanitary sewer system. Met Council encourages innovative approaches like this to reduce sewage treatment costs and allows uses to apply for a deferral of sewer availability charges, which is that SAC fee. Silver Star Car Wash has submitted for a deferral of the sewer availability charge through the Metropolitan Council. In order to receive this deferral, the Metropolitan Council requires the city to enter into an agreement with the property owner. The agreement is attached to this memorandum for review. And so we're looking to approve the partial deferral of SAC fees agreement with Silver Star Car Wash at 2085 Northdale Boulevard. And it's important to note that in that agreement, if they do anything to jeopardize that or lose that, that then they do have to pay those SAC fees, so.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Just want to say I appreciate Silver Star Car Wash for the innovative approach to save on our water, and with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are up to item six, which is to consider Resolution 23-3-sub-8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids, sanitary sewer lining. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is continuation of our large diameter sewer lining, basically our large trunk collector pipes that the entire city drains to. This is phase three. It's roughly from the intersection of Yegret and 99th heading west all the way over to Hanson and north on Hanson up to about 105th Mississippi area. We budgeted for this. It's, you know, one phase of multi, so in addition to lining this portion, we'll also continue to look upstream to determine the condition of that pipe, to decide whether or not we've gone far enough or we have to keep chasing this. So this is one area of the city where we're doing it. We'll continue on with this program. We're just asking for permission to go out and secure bids at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the project or the program.
Mr. Hammer, I had a question. So there are a number of individual residential services connected directly to the large diameter sewer pipe that's proposed to be lined, so the project specifications will include temporary short-term accommodation to be provided at local area hotels for affected homeowners while the line in front of their property is being completed. Any idea how temporary, any idea how that will be regulated so they're actually placed in one of our nicer hotels?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we're looking at probably two to three days per grouping of homes. The good news about the bypass on this one is we can put it on the outside, so we're not crossing any roads. It can kind of follow the park, but in areas, we're going to have to stage manhole to manhole, might be six homes in one, three in the next, and just kind of leapfrogging our way down. The idea is to put it into the specifications that it's the contractor's responsibility, so the city doesn't have to manage that component or try to determine how many people, how many rooms, that's solely on the contractor. And that's part of what they're bidding on is providing those accommodations.
Right, and I understand that was part of the bid. I guess I wanted to make sure that they weren't going to put them in extended stay or something, that they were actually going to put them like at the Holiday Inn or.
We certainly.
And is there a meal per diem? Because they can't cook then either. Is that built in there?
I'm not sure about that, Mr. Mayor, but I could certainly find that out, and we could add any sort of restrictions we would like around the type of accommodations and/or per diem.
I just, I mean, this is really directly going to impact somebody's life for a few days, and I would just hate to see it be a real negative experience because of getting sent to the wrong motel or, you know, having to eat fast food for three days because they have no cooking facilities and we're not giving them any compensation for meals. It's funny, my questions are more around that than the project itself, because the project itself seems pretty straightforward.
Aside from the fact that there's individual services connected.
No, no, right, yeah.
But yes, we can create some specification language around the types of accommodations and minimum per diems.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor. Councilmember Novak.
A quick question, have all of the people that are going to be affected by this already been notified?
They have not, because we're not even sure it's a project yet, so we don't like to notify people until we know we have a project, at which point then, yes, they will be along with the schedule, and it's not like, hey, tomorrow you need to be out of here. There'll be plenty of lead time.
Well, that's true, because we also got pets to deal with, too. It's like, this is kind of a, this is a big deal. All right, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Maybe this is, you know, just, so there might be some people who would say, you know what, I don't want to go to a hotel or whatever, I could go stay with family. Would there be any compensation for people who would opt out of a hotel or any of those other kinds of things, that we would give them an option to go stay with family and then not have the burden on us of where they're going and the per diems and whatnot?
We can write our specs any way we'd like. Councilmember Geisler, to provide some sort of an opt-out clause, a minimum compensation under that type of scenario.
Yeah, I think I'd like to, if everybody's kind of agreeable, have an option for folks, because if, you know, they may be more comfortable with family if they have that option, and give them some benefit for doing that. Saves us or the contractor the need of trying to find the places and all of that other stuff, so. Okay.
Sounds good. Any other questions of Mr. Hammer on this? Otherwise, I think we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-3-sub-8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for city project 23-3, the 2023 Lining Project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, was that a second by Armstrong?
Yep.
Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And that is the end of our agenda items, and we are up to open mic. Is there anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? Have you? Please come forward then. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So, three minutes, and please give us your name and address.
My name is Ramona Voight. I live on 94th Avenue, northwest Coon Rapids. I back up to Coon Rapids Dam Park, and I'm coming to you because I don't know who else to talk to, you're my city council, and so I know the park is run by Anoka County, so it's not the city's park. But my, I've lived by that park for 35 years, and I've cross-country skied in it every time the trails have been groomed. Last year, they didn't groom them, and when I called, I asked about, it was because they were taking out trees and they weren't going to do it, and this year, they didn't do it again, and so I called, and they said, it's been decided that people want just walking trails. I don't know how they decided that, because every time I was skiing, people skied. So anyway, I think it's a beautiful park. It's kind of feather in our cap. It's in our city, and I don't know if you guys have some influence that you could do something so we could get those ski trails back next year. And then the bike trail there, because we back up, we cross the dam and go into, is it Brooklyn Park, that one's that part, and their park, their trails, their bike trails are really nice, and we have great trails. I love that we have the trails that we have in our city, and I use them all, I biked 1,400 miles last year. So, but I got an e-bike, so that's not a little cheap. But, but part of that trail is so beat up, you wouldn't bike on it, and you used to cross the bridge, the bridge is gone. I understand that's a big expense, but to repave part of that trail needs to be done, and they said that would be done last year, it didn't happen. They said maybe next year, but just that, I don't know who else to turn to. Any suggestions? That's all I have to say.
So I mean, it sounds like you've talked to Jeff Perry or somebody at the county.
I talked to whoever said they groomed the trails, and he said, we don't groom the trails because people walk in them. And being a skier, I will gladly ski in a trail that's been walked in, then not groomed at all, you know, and it keeps our people healthy if you can get out and do stuff. It's a great park. I think we're really lucky to have it.
So what I'm going to suggest is that staff will check with Anoka County Parks and get an answer for you.
Okay.
And if they need any direction from us, they'll come back, and you'll get a response from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully you're enjoying the trails up at Bunker, too, those. It's a perfect year for cross-country skiing. Yeah.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
Thomas Kiekefer, 12772 Swallow Street Northwest, Coon Rapids. Mayor Cook and city council members, one of the principles that I live by is to leave it better for our children and future generations. Our climate is rapidly warming, which is causing more severe weather, flooding, droughts, and tornadic events. We all share a responsibility to pass on an environment that our children and grandchildren and all future generations can live and thrive in. I have three granddaughters, all under the age of five, and they deserve the same opportunities that we have all had. Therefore, I'm speaking to you tonight in support of the Energy Action Plan and the proposed solar project at the West Water Treatment Plant and Recycling Center. The Energy Action Plan focuses on three areas: energy efficiency, renewable energy, and electric vehicle preparedness. By focusing on these areas, as I read in the plan, the city of Coon Rapids will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 35% or 98,000 metric tons of CO2 by 2030. This is not only a win for the city, but for the future generations by working to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Our electric vehicle, or excuse me, our electric utilities are moving quickly to convert to wind and solar power. Wind and solar power will be the future by producing electricity and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and slowing the climate crisis as we are all facing. These clean forms of electric power will become the norm in a short time. It has been recommended to the city council to provide feedback on a proposed solar project for the West Water Treatment Plant and Recycling Center. I have contacted the mayor and a couple of council members about the project, and they've been told there is some concern about the break-even point. As I understand it, the city is only providing the land for the project, and Apex Engineering Group will be installing and maintaining the panels, and in return, the city will purchase the electricity from Apex at only a 2% annual increase rate over 25 years, as compared to the going rate that would be charged at whatever, at about 3.5% a year, saving the city approximately $90,000. This project seems like a win for the city, so my question is, why is there a concern about the break-even point for the project since the city is not only, is not making a financial investment in the equipment? It seems important that all the details of this project be provided, and so it's better understood by the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that should end, oh, I'm sorry. Welcome our county attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brad Johnson. I live at 10410 Holly Street Northwest in the city of Coon Rapids. Kind of feel a little bit like Rodney Dangerfield after that introduction. But a couple of things that I'd like to just pass along to the city council here. First of all, it is very nice for me to see council members Armstrong and Novak up there. You know, it's interesting for me to sit in the back of council chambers here and look up at Brian Armstrong, when for the last year, he's been looking up at me in the same, in the same seat up there. So welcome to both of you, and thank you for stepping forward to serve the city in this capacity. I just wanted to give a short report on the county attorney's office and be brief on that. As you all know, there have been some priorities I've had as a candidate for county attorney and now as the county attorney, and one of those things is to assign each of our prosecutors to a law enforcement agency in the county, and I wanted to just give a quick report back to you that that has been done. And so each of our law enforcement agencies in the county has a prosecutor assigned to them, and they are in the process of reaching out and starting to forge those relationships. Likewise, assignments are being made for our juvenile division attorneys to build a relationship with each of the public high schools in the county, and that was also one of my priorities, and that's underway as we speak. I was pleased on the Joint Law Enforcement Council to see Mayor Cook as the new council member representative for Coon Rapids, joining Chief Stanky on our Joint Law Enforcement Council, and also to see Jennifer Geisler as the alternate for that, and I appreciate the engagement of the city of Coon Rapids in Joint Law Enforcement Council and the partnership that we all have there. I wanted to report, too, that I feel very blessed and fortunate to have hired what I think is selfishly the best chief deputy in the metro area, if not in the state of Minnesota, for the chief deputy position in the county attorney's office, and that's former Chief Judge Bethany Fountain Lindberg, who started yesterday, so she's now in that role in the county attorney's office. So things are moving forward, as I would like to see them move forward, and I'm very pleased to be able to make that report to you. I feel like teasing Tim Hammer a little bit about all the snow we've been getting a little bit, but I know how hard he and his crew have been working to deal with those issues, and I'm probably at my three minutes, and I know this isn't a place for problem solving, so I'm not going to get launched off into any of that, so.
County attorney, I was not timing you.
Okay.
Sort of like, when the sheriff was here, I didn't put him out of time.
I think it's a good practice for me, though, to limit my remarks to three minutes, because when I was sitting up there, I never did, so.
True. County Attorney Johnson, would you meet me in front of the dais if you're done there?
Yes, well, I want to say one other little thing, and that is, I think the community saw an example tonight of what open mic or the public comment session is intended to be used for, and so I'd like to thank constituents that have come forward and shared their thoughts. Those were both very constructive and helpful thoughts from the perspective of being somebody who's sat up there before. And one of the evolutions of this process has been that the Anoka County Board has adopted a brand-new public comment session. It's not exactly the same, but there are key aspects of it that are modeled after the Coon Rapids model. And so it is because of the example that you all have made here that I think it's created open minds and open space for other bodies of government to want to hear from their constituents in a capacity. It's not like there isn't, you know, there's always a good, a bad, and an indifferent with respect to some of these things, but having this forum and having people exercise this forum in this way, I think is really helpful to the decision-making for a body like the city council, so it was nice to see tonight, and it's also nice to see the county board have a version of it as well.
That was actually a really good point. So like, if somebody wanted to get Anoka County Park trails groomed.
Oh, there's a public comment.
There's a public comment period at the Anoka County Board meetings.
Now, it's not televised, but, but yes, there's a forum for doing that, right, to the whole county board.
Thank you.
Right over here.
Tell me where to stand.
Stand right there. All right. Councilmember Johnson, I know I said a lot of nice things about you before, so I'm going to kind of cut it short tonight, but it was a great honor to serve with you for eight years on the council. You added so much, and you represented your constituents very well. We thank you for all of your service, and I'm going to, I don't want to give you the mic, because I know what could happen there, so.
I've already spent my three minutes, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
There we go.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you very much. Thank you for those kind words.
And I do love this.
Turn it back off.
Creative.
I do love that it's B. Johnson, court.
I'll remind that to the judge when she comes into my office.
And anybody else for open mic? All right, we'll close that portion of the, I don't have any reports on previous open mic, and we are up to other business. And I'd just like to kind of start with a couple of quick things here. I would like to, our 59th Annual Snowflake Days are underway, and they were kicked off by crowning a new Ms. Coon Rapids, Emily Schumacher, and a new Ms. or new Ms. Coon Rapids Outstanding Teen, Kenley, and I'm going to say it's Barbaro. She said it for me, she spelled it for me, but I was hungry and I was getting my waffle, and I don't remember. But congratulations to both of them. They look like they're both going to be outstanding representatives for Coon Rapids. The Snowflake Day's marquee is Donna Carson, and this year, it's the 59th year, it's just going to be one week long, and we're in the middle of that week right now, and it's going to wrap up this coming weekend. And I know there's some events coming up, there's Cookies and Canvas coming up, I believe the Kids' Medallion Hunt is still coming up.
It's on Saturday, the 11th.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't have, I don't have the events, I just have those couple notes, so.
Mayor Council, I can mention that there's a winter fun day as a part of the Snowflake Days at the Coon Rapids, or I'm sorry, at Sand Creek Park this Saturday, the 11th, with the medallion hunt from 10 to 11, Cookies and Canvas from 12 to 2, an award ceremony for a snowman contest at 2:15, outdoor skating, free hot dogs and chocolate, hot chocolate until they are gone. So more information on our website, I know the Mayor's Cup Simulator Golf Tournament is this weekend as well, so I think there's a few activities yet that if you want to get into winter while it's still around, now you have your chance.
That's the previous mayor's legacy.
Yes. True.
And then, yeah, and then just kind of a 59th year, one week. Next year, it's going to be the 60th, and it's going to be three weeks, and it's going to be huge, and what we want to do is we want to attract all of the community groups back into this and hosting some events, you know, and really make it a big community rally, so. All right, other business. Thursday night, two nights, Richard Zuplinski playing his accordion. My friend and my accordion teacher. And there will be a mom showing, so my mom will be there, so go ahead, Ben.
I just want to just say best of luck to the Coon Rapids competition cheerleading team that is going down for Nationals in Orlando, Florida. Team that is going down for Nationals in Orlando, Florida, pretty darn soon. They had a really fun rally last night. Boy, that fieldhouse was packed, and it was a ball.
It was so impressive. The routines that they do are, I mean, when you've got three, three of the team all shooting vertical up on top of hands, and it's just, there's a lot going on there.
And, and if you missed it, it's on YouTube, so you can go check it online.
CTN recorded it, yeah, that was nice.
Yep, so.
Yeah, they have a, their, their anchor, I guess he'd probably be their anchor, Darius. Oh my gosh, he's going to play football at Augsburg next year. He's got a Father Riser handshake. But it was just very impressive. All right, other business? Okay, somebody want to get us out of here?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Armstrong to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.